Okay, we'll get started in about thirty seconds. Good evening, School Board, uh, School Board members, Superintendent, District staff, and community members. The time is now five thirty PM on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and I call this public hearing of the Edgewood Independent School District School Board to order. I'm very pleased that you took the time to join us this evening in compliance with the State Government Code five-five-one for Open Meetings Act, uh, Act. Tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. This is a meeting of, in a public entity, not a meeting of the public. As our guests, you are welcome to observe and listen. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded and will become part of Edgewood ISD's permanent record. To ensure the recording accurately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are recorded accurately, I may ask, uh, I may have to ask for order periodically should I notice that disruptions are interfering with our recording capabilities. Once again, I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire Edgewood ISD Board. Uh, roll call. Ms. Martha Castilla?
Here.
Mr. Frank Espinoza?
Present.
Mr. Luis Gomez?
Present.
Mr. Rudy Lopez?
Present.
Mr. Michael Valdez?
Present.
Mr. Sergio Delgado?
Present.
Myself, Dr. James Hernandez, is present. Let the record show that the quorum of the Edgewood Independent School District School Board is present, and that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Um, Ms., uh, Dr. Hernandez, do we have communication from citizens?
Yes, sir, we do. We have to.
Okay. Mr. Espinoza, go ahead.
Our next item on the agenda is communications from citizens. This is a time for community staff and students to provide their comments to the school board. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and specific agenda item must have been submitted in person or signed up online with the Board Operations Manager. Each speaker will have three minutes or less, depending on the number of people who have signed up to speak. Non-English speakers who require a translator may be given up to six minutes to speak. The presiding officer of, of the meeting may modify or waive these time limits as appropriate. In accordance with the Edgewood ISD Board Policy BED Local, the Board shall not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the audience. Speakers or others who engage in disruptive behavior may be ruled out of order by the presiding officer. Disruptive behavior and action include not, but not limited to racial slurs, insulting, profane, threatening, derogatory, or abusive language, making violent or threatening gestures. Public comment is not intended for the speakers to make allegations of employee or student misconduct, requests for employee or student discipline, personal attacks on individuals, or disclosing information about district employees or students. If an individual makes a complaint, I, as the presiding officer, will interrupt you, ask you to stop, and direct you to seek resolution of your complaint through the district's appropriate formal grievance policy DGBA for employee complaints, FNG for student or parent complaints, and GF for public complaints. If after at least one warning from the presiding officer or any person continues to disrupt the meeting by their words or actions, the presiding officer may request assistance, excuse me, from, uh, from law enforcement officials to have the person escorted from the meeting. By law, the Edgewood Independent School District Board of Trustees cannot lawfully discuss, deliberate, make comments, or make a decision on any matter raised in the public comment period that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries, but the Board shall not deliberate or make decisions regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Signs, placards, or banners shall not be allowed in the boardroom. If you have any handouts to distribute to the board members, please hand them to the Board Operations Manager to my left.
All right. Thank you, sir. And now we have, um... Communication from citizens. Ms. Agapita Jaramillo, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent. My name is Agapita Jaramillo, a community member, grandmother, and a legacy for over sixty years. Today, we are presenting and approving the turnaround plan and targeted improvement plan for our district. As we have six campuses that are listed as, as the turnaround plan, one of these campuses has indicated an F rating for three years. Our district is a small district, therefore this is unacceptable and disappointing. I feel that we should have addressed this concern sooner, but the fact remains, and we move forward. The concern I have is that we continue to see the problem, you continue to tell us that we are making the gains, then why are we on a turnaround plan? Chronic absenteeism, lack of staff support, lack of resources, lack of parent engagement in the campuses, all of these can be factors of the decrease in academic gain, but you continue to use COVID as an excuse. We need to be honest with the community and stop sending your children home with great grades, but, but let them know they are behind in grade level, that absenteeism is affecting their academic growth. In addition, you list a turnaround pa, turnaround plan for each campus with a survey attached, but honestly, who is going to read twenty-one pages of, of it? And then, when you try and do the survey, it is not accepting any forms. It wouldn't accept my form. So, do you really want parent input or not? My question to you is, did experts come in and help us? Let's swallow our pride and bring someone that really knows our needs. And I have been very fortunate. My granddaughter is a fifth grader at Las Palmas Middle School. She came from Plauer Bluff. She has been challenged, and she came from a very good school, and I've kept track with her teacher as far as her performance, but a lot of our parents don't know how to go, you know, beyond those means. They, they don't know how. So, we need mandatory teacher-parent conferences. We need to address the parents on a one-to-one and let them know exactly what their child is at, how behind they are, and what needs to happen. And, I mean, I'm sorry, you know, I know it's statewide, but we're a very small campus guys, so we need to do something because every child that graduates with a diploma needs to be successful. I don't, you know, it's sad when I see graduates working at McDonald's and, because that's all they can do. Let's challenge our kids, please. Let's do something. I don't know what it's gonna take, but no money in the world. I mean, I mean, we, we need, we need to really, really invest in our kids' education. We really do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next, Ms. Melody Herrera.
My name is Melody Herrera, and I am speaking tonight not only as a community member, but as a someone with a nephew and cousins in Rhode in the district. What happens in Edgewood ISD directly affects my family, and I am deeply concerned. Tonight, you will be reviewing targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans for multiple campuses: Gus Garcia University School, Kennedy High School, Brentwood Steam, Roosevelt Dual Language Academy, Henry B. Gonzalez, Stafford, Las Palmas, Royce Sisnetos. The number of campuses needing intervention makes one thing clear: We cannot continue operating the way we have. At a recent board workshop, I heard something that honestly shocked me. It was mentioned that the superintendent meets with principals about three times a year, with the district sitting at an overall rating of a D. That is unacceptable. With, we have only seventeen schools. Monthly meetings with principals should be the bare minimum, not an unrealistic expectation. If our campuses are in trouble, leadership must be present, visible, and engaged regularly, period. I am also extremely concerned about the constant turn, turnover of principals and paraprofessionals, especially in early childhood grades. Students cannot succeed when adults they depend on are constantly changing. The message is, this sends is that employees do not feel supported or valued. And let me be clear, if you treat employees right, they will stay. If you ignore their concerns, they will leave, and our students, uh, pay the price which we have seen. Teachers and support staff have repeatedly said what they need: real professional development, adequate resources, manageable workloads, and leadership that listens to them instead of directing from a distance. None of this is optional if we expect genuine improvement. These improvements and turnaround plans cannot be just another set of documents checked off for compliance. They must come with action, accountability, and frequent monitoring. Our students don't have the luxury of waiting another year for results. They deserve quality instruction, stable campuses, and strong CTE opportunities that actually prepare them for life. And I would appreciate it if the board members would listen when up, up here speaking, because it affects our students. Thank you. We cannot continue doing the same things and expecting different outcomes. The urgency is real. The stakes are high, and the community is watching. For the sake of every child in Edgewood ISD, including my own family members, I am asking this board to take bold, consistent actions, hold leadership accountable, and ensure our campuses receive the support they desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to add a couple of comments, um, to what was just spoken, and, um, citizens to be heard, uh, for the record.
Okay, go ahead.
I do want to share with the community that as part of B, as part of BQA Local, BQA Legal, BQB Local, and BQB Legal, uh, every campus in this district is required to ensure that these turnaround plans are developed in accordance with both members from the organization, that being the school, as well as members from the community. So, that, that, that would be the first thing that I want to make sure that folks also understand. I think the second thing that I'd like to enter into the record, uh, we have now had nine morning parent meetings, uh, across the district, only because there's only so many days, uh, each month, and we are meeting with parents in the morning and being very specific about the grades that the schools are producing, and not just the schools that are in this turnaround plan and the, a targeted improvement plan, but as well as our B campuses, as well as our C campuses. Uh, it is a very direct conversation with parents. There have now been recommendations, which I will allude to a little more in my superintendent's, uh, report later tonight, uh, from parents that, yes, factually are about personnel. They're also about other things like other needs on campus. So, we are having those discussions with parents, as well as luncheons with parents and students. So, I do want our general public to understand, these reports are not created without, uh, input from both our campus staff and our community at each particular campus. Um, those are things that I, I want to enter into the record, uh, as well as also things like CT, uh, CTE extravaganza, which we had last month. Uh, it was part of the trunk-or-treat, which a lot of parents came into that. And so, again, I want to enter that into the record because this work, um, we mentioned at the workshop that principals are meeting with the superintendent three to four times a year. Those are targeted individual meetings. We actually meet with principals twice a month, and that's been a cadence that's been going on for a few years. So, I want to be factual about the information that's shared with the public. I would ask our general public, please come to our parent meetings in the mornings during drop-off, either during lunch, during the United Voices Council, if you sit on that council, and/or the superintendent's community meetings as well. And so, that would be what I'd like to add for the record. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to, to ask our administration, um, it was a concern that, uh, the QR code isn't working, uh, but if that's the case, I would like our district to look into that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Next, uh, next agenda item, uh, presentation. The board, board, uh, excuse me, board members, is there a motion to open the public hearing regarding the Edgewood ISD twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm moved to open up the public hearing for the Edgewood Independent School District twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans.
Hey, Mr. Aldiz motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Delgado, seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All those abstaining, raise your hand and say abstain. Okay, motion carries. All right. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Hernandez, board members, Superintendent, Dr. Hernandez, community, and colleagues. My name is Travis McElvain, Chief of Schools, and I am joined tonight by Dr. Shelley Butler, Dr. Kimberly Mattkins, Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership, and, and Ms. Claudia Barrios, and we appreciate the opportunity to share our district's school improvement efforts and plans. Tonight, we'll help under, we'll help in ex, I'm sorry. Tonight, we'll explain why some campuses require improvement plans and what results in targeted improvement plan and turnaround plan status. We'll highlight the key actions that schools are taking to strengthen teaching and support student learning, explain how we'll monitor progress, and share ways that families can stay involved. Our commitment is to improvement for every school and every student. So, before we dive in, I want to clarify a few items, uh, that you'll see throughout the presentation. The TAP is referred to as the Targeted Improvement Plan, and it is a first-year improvement plan for campuses in need of improvement. When you see the acronym TAP, it refers to a multi-year state monitored plan, also known as the turnaround plan, and HQIM refers to high-quality instructional materials that are vetted and approved by the state. PLCs are weekly planning and data meetings that occur with teachers and administrators and instructional coaches on the campus on a weekly basis. And to exit improvement status, as you see toward the end, uh, toward the bottom of the list, the exit criteria, campuses must earn a C or higher. So, here's how campuses enter these, uh, targeted improvement plans or turnaround plans. The targeted improvement plan is triggered by a first unacceptable rating with the goal to return to acceptable performance. A turnaround plan is for campuses with two or more consecutive unacceptable ratings that require sustained redesign and monitoring. In both cases, the exit criteria is earning a C or higher in the state accountability system. So, where we are today, currently, some campuses are in their first year of improvement planning, while others are engaged in a multi-year redesign, uh, effort. Instructional systems are improving but remain uneven, and teaching practice is strengthening, yet student growth is still below expectations. Families and staff continue to ask for clearer communication, stronger supports, and more consistent instruction. As a reminder to the community and to our board, campuses that have been, have been identified for improvement plans were designated after districts across the state received three years of accountability data from TEA over around a four-month period of time toward the end of twenty-two-five. So, on the screen, you'll see campuses that are designated for either a turnaround plan or a targeted improvement plan. Again, um, a turn, a targeted improvement plan follows a first year of unacceptable rating, with the exception of, um, what you see to be our, uh, John F. Kennedy High School, which has a targeted improvement plan as, with a C rating, overall C rating by the state, um, but it has a turnaround, I'm sorry, a targeted improvement plan based on a, a grant, um, referred to as the Effective Schools Framework Grant. The targeted turnaround plan follows two or more consecutive unacceptable ratings. Both plans require comprehensive progress and support, including federal grants and focused monitoring, and again, the goal for all campuses is to achieve a C rating or higher. Campuses at the top of the slide are designated as turnaround plan campuses and include Henry B. Gonzalez Elementary School, Las Palmas Leadership School for Gor, for Girls, Royce Sisnetos Leadership School, Roosevelt Dual Language Academy, and Brentwood Steam School of Innovation. Targeted improvement plan campuses include Gus Garcia University School, Learn for Life, which is a B-rated campus, and John F. Kennedy High School, which is a C-rated campus and is in a improvement plan status due to the, uh, grant that I referred to earlier. So, whether our campuses are in a one-year, two-year, or three-year cycle, our pathway includes consistent routines for lesson planning and, uh, professional learning communities, using high-quality instructional materials in the classroom every day with fidelity, coaching and feedback cycles that are performed by our instructional coaches and campus administrators, early wins, uh, throughout our schools to build momentum on progress, partnerships with TEA-approved turnaround partners, which you'll hear more about, uh, shortly, data-driven instruction, structured support for leaders and teachers, and frequent monitoring and regular check-ins with district leadership. The components of the targeted improvement plan and turnaround plans for each campus includes a needs assessment, stakeholder engagement, including, uh, parental, uh, and community engagement, student outcome goals, support for special populations, instructional strategies, support for teachers and new educators, monthly progress checks, and performance management and resource allocation. And now, Dr. Shelley Butler, our Senior Director of Instructional Leadership, will share more details about our campuses' targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans.
Thank you. We are committed to providing targeted support for both teachers and students in special populations, including those receiving special education services, 504 accommodations, and emergent bilingual students. Our approach includes high-impact professional learning communities, where teachers clarify lesson objectives, anticipate misconceptions, and rehearse lesson delivery to ensure clarity and rigor. Regular observation and feedback cycles to strengthen instructional practice, monthly check-ins for special education and bilingual programs to ensure compliance and high-quality instruction, and targeted professional development for educators serving students with varied needs. These supports are designed to promote equity and access, ensuring every student receives the resources and instruction they need to succeed. In our classrooms, you'll notice several important shifts: more robust lesson planning and consistent use of student data to inform instruction, increase in more effective small group support tailored to individual student needs. Teachers meet weekly to review student work and collaboratively adjust instruction for greater impact. Leaders provide timely feedback within forty-eight hours to help teachers refine their lessons. And schools are leveraging data-driven decision-making and partnership are accelerating teacher growth. These changes are driving more consistent implementation of our district curriculum and improving outcomes for all students. We recognize the importance of supporting teachers. Individualized coaching, lesson modeling, and planning support are provided for every new educator. Professional development sessions occur every six weeks, focusing on best practices and instructional strategy. Weekly coaching cycles and high-impact PLCs enable teachers to adjust instruction in real time. Leaders and coordinators model lessons, co-teach, and guide planning and strategy refinement. And teachers also collaborate weekly to internalize and rehearse lessons before delivering them to students, ensuring clarity and confidence in instruction. We are strengthening our systems to better serve students who require the most targeted support, increasing monitoring of the special education and emergent bilingual student experience to ensure services are delivered as required. Structured intervention planning for students with specialized needs and ongoing professional development focus on effective strategies for special education and emergent bilingual learners. These measures help guarantee that every student receives the appropriate services and consistent, high-quality instruction tailored to their individual needs. Over the course of the year, we'll reach several important milestones that mark our progress. We launched foundational professional development and implemented high-quality instructional materials in August. Our teams have adopted research-based instructional strategies, and we conduct regular curriculum audits. Stakeholder surveys and fidelity walks will help us gather feedback and ensure best practices. Accountability review meetings and data-driven PLCs will keep us focused on results. Lastly, we will use structured protocols to analyze student work and provide targeted interventions in reading and in math. Each milestone is a step forward in strengthening our instructional systems and accelerating student achievement. As we continue our journey of school improvement, it's important to recognize the strategic investments our board has made to support student success along, across three key areas: curriculum and instruction, staffing, and mental health and well-being. First, in curriculum and instruction, you've invested in high-quality instructional resources such as Bluebonnet Learning, Great Minds, Panorama, and Summit K-12. Also, we've received support to improve our district curriculum through the curriculum audit conducted by Region Twenty. Second, in staffing, you've committed to recruiting, developing, and retaining talented educators. Initiatives like TeachWorthy, Thrive, and Grow Your Own help us build a strong pipeline of teachers and leaders. In addition, you approved our modified instructional coach model that allowed us to place master teachers in the classroom for half a day. This initiative makes them eligible for TIA. And finally, in mental health and well-being, we know that student success depends on more than academics. Our board has invested in partnerships with organizations such as Rise Recovery and the San Antonio Hope Center. These resources provide counseling, family support, and wellness programs to help students thrive both inside and outside the classroom. Together, these investments reflect our board's commitment to creating safe, supportive, and high-achieving schools for every student. To exit school improvement status, campuses must earn a C, a C rating or higher in the accountability system. A five-point gain in campus scores can translate to a four-to-five percent increase in student success across all tested subjects. And what drives these gains? Strong, consistent teaching every day. Focus small group support for students who need it most. Weekly feedback and coaching for teachers. And active family engagement keeps students motivated and present. Every point earned represents real progress. More students passing assessments, demonstrating growth, and meeting learning goals. We ensure progress through a disciplined approach to monitoring and accountability. Regular updates to the board, weekly supervisor reviews of campus progress, regular superintendent data reviews with principals, and ongoing classroom walkthroughs and observation of PLCs. These practices keep us focused, responsive, and transparent as we work toward our improvement goals. And next, you will hear from our district's school improvement director, Claudia Clario.
Thank you. We're seeing early encouraging signs of progress across our campuses. Instruction is more aligned through weekly, high-impact professional learning communities that are focused on lesson internalization and data analysis. Walkthroughs confirm a strong tier-one alignment. Lesson planning is stronger. New reading and math teachers are completing coaching cycles, and professional development sessions occur every six weeks, aligned to high-quality materials and data trends. Additionally, instructional materials are fully implemented with required minutes met. Our improvement campuses are engaging in lesson modeling and co-teaching with Great Minds specialists. Tonight, we seek board approval for our initial turnaround and targeted improvement plan. Plans will be submitted to the Texas Education Agency by November four. The Texas Education Agency will provide feedback by January twenty-third, with a final decision by April the eighth, and final ratings in summer. with a final decision by April the 8th and final ratings in summer of 2025. Success is a shared effort. Parents and community partners play a vital role in helping us achieve these goals. So how can you help? Here's how families can make a big difference. These actions strengthen learning and keep students on track. Stay informed through newsletters and meetings. Support learning at home, encourage reading, homework, and attendance. Provide feedback through surveys and conversations with teachers and principals. And build positive communication and model respect for learning. In October, we launched a stakeholder survey that closed today at 10:15 a.m., and here's what you told us. You want safety and strong learning for your children. You appreciate the strategies in the plan, but want to see clear actions. You ask for more hands-on coaching and family involvement. We're responding by increasing parent communication, adding monthly updates, and keeping the process transparent. Together, we're building stronger schools and brighter future for every student. Thank you for your partnership and commitment. And next, you will hear from Dr. Kimberly Mattkins, Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership.
As a district, our commitment moving forward is that we're committed to monitoring progress every single month and adjusting support quickly when a campus of great level is not moving in the right direction. We are committed to providing high-quality training every six weeks so that teachers have the tools to deliver strong, great-level instruction. We're committed to coaching new teachers and principals aggressively because experience should not determine whether a child receives a great education. And we are committed to strengthening support for our special education and emergent bilingual students through tighter systems and earlier interventions. And above all, we remain focused on one goal, and that is every student learning at grade level, no exceptions, no excuses. So how do we make sure we stay on track? Turnaround is just not a collection of activities, it's a disciplined practice. So what we've done is that we've created consistent systems for planning, coaching, and curriculum fidelity. It means monthly milestone reviews at every campus, district-level monitoring, and superintendent check-ins tied directly to student results, in addition to the feedback from the superintendent that occurs twice monthly at our principal meetings, in addition to campus and district walks held by the superintendent. It means real-time data from walkthroughs, PLC evidence, exit tickets, interim assessments, guiding the next instructional move. It means stronger accountability for leaders and targeted support for new teachers and high-need student groups. And it means transparent reporting to families and to the board every step of the way. This is how we stay on track, this is how we build momentum, and this is how we ensure that progress we make this year becomes the foundation for long-term success. And so what can families expect this year? As we move throughout the school year, families have probably already seen these noticeable shifts and how instruction and communication happens across our campuses. First, you'll see more consistent instruction from classroom to classroom, and that goes back to the highly qualified instructional materials that the board approved. That means clearer lessons, stronger routines, and the same expectations for every student, no matter which teacher they have. You'll see more transparent communication from teachers and principals. You will receive regular updates on progress, and importantly, when your child needs support, not months later, but right away. The majority of our campuses have already had their data nights and family meetings, as well as coffee with the principal and our Title I meeting. You'll also see us identifying student needs earlier, particularly in reading and math. Schools will be increasing small-group support so students can get more individualized help during the day. And finally, we are strengthening monitoring for students receiving, again, special education and emergent bilingual services. Families should feel confident that their students are receiving the support and instruction they are entitled to. Our commitment is simple, we're all on the same page, families deserve to see and feel the improvement happening in our classrooms. Board, as you recall, all of the documents listed here on this slide have been shared through the board update. Those are our turnaround engagement timelines, the TAP versus TAP comparison information sheet, each campus's turnaround plan, and district improvement plan, along with the targeted improvement plans, excuse me. These resources provide a clear picture of where campuses stand, what supports are in place, and how we'll monitor throughout the year. As I close, I want to reiterate our commitment, every school, every classroom, every student. Our district leadership team is united in ensuring that every child in Edgewood ISD learns at grade level with no exceptions and no excuses. If you have questions or ideas or concerns after tonight, our contact information is listed up here on the screen. We encourage you to reach out, your voice and your partnership and your feedback matter because we can't do this by ourselves, it's going to take the entire community, along with families and schools, working together. Thank you for your engagement, and thank you for standing with us as we move schools forward.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh.
Do we have any questions regarding the 2025-2026 targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
At the board workshop, you provided us a current status, a one-pager for the turnaround plan campuses, but if there's one available for the targeted improvement plan campuses, the three, if there's a one-pager, I would like to have a one-pager as well.
Okay. We can get that to you in the board.
And then, my next question is, because we do have two operating partners, Learn for Life and the the operating partner that runs the two IB schools, but do they have to be notified that we're approving these plans?
They have been a part of the work, and so they were here at the board workshop, and they were aware of the meeting tonight. I'm not sure if any of them are here, but they have been a part of the process.
Thank you. So also, I have one last question. So this plan, do we find out if the campuses improved at the end of the school year, or will we find out if there's starting to be in these two statuses in a year from now?
Do you need a plan themselves, or?
Like, let's say the campuses, let's say they received an acceptable rating, especially some of them that received an unacceptable rating. So will they be, will we see at the board, like, because it won't be in the targeted improvement plan, right? Like, they'll be outside of the targeted improvement plan?
If I'm understanding your question, we will get our results in June of 2026, whenever TEA releases. Is that what you're asking me? I'm not exactly sure.
Yes, and then that's when they'll be out of the status if they approved, if they received an acceptable rating?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I also want to thank all of y'all that helped us, also with the board. At the board workshop, we did receive a lot of information, so I really want to thank you all for that. So thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I do have a comment. I just want to say thank you, thank you for your work. Can you go back to the slide with what the parents and community? So this, for me, is really important because we will, you know, as a board, we will do what we can, you know, to support the superintendent, and of course, we let him know, please support his team, and also the teachers. I'm a real big advocate for supporting our teachers because our, you know, the research shows teachers have the number-one impact, and right behind his administration, however, also our community. So it's gonna, we're positioned, we're positioned to have C, or I would even go B campuses by next year, or then within the next two years. But it is going to take everybody working as hard as they can. You know, that includes, you know, us as a district, but also our parents. And that's why I want to keep repeating that what parents can do immediately, make sure their kids are at school. What were the other two? Reading, at least 10 minutes?
Yes.
And then math, I think you added math.
Yes.
So that's math facts, at least 10 minutes. And that's not just the little ones, that's not just elementary, middle school, talk to your middle school, and high school students. Even if it's just 10 minutes, and just to get them talking about school and academics, because it is different. It is different from just casual, right, speaking. Academic language is a different thing altogether, so I want to encourage everybody because I'm very confident we are positioned by next year to have at least C and possibly a few more B campuses, and I'm very confident in that. But I just want to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions, all right? So if we have no other comments or questions, I need a motion to close the public hearing regarding the 2025-2026 targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I move to close the public hearing for the Edgewood ISD 2025-2026 targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans.
Okay, Mr. Aldiz motions, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lopez, seconds? Okay, all those, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All those who are abstaining, raise your hand and say abstain. Okay, motion carries. The time is now 6:08 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing of the Edgewood Independent School District? Hey, Mr., Mr., sorry, Mr. Gomez motions, is there a second?
I second.
She got it first. Okay, Ms. Garcia, seconds? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All those who are abstaining, raise your hand and say abstain. Okay, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. And we're gonna start right back with our next.